Okay. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. I'll stand for the flag salute. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And so next will be roll call. Councilmember Murray.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Counted for.
Mayor Pro Tem Wall.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here. Thank you. Before I go to public comment, I just want to just make sure that this is our last Monday night meeting ever. So, okay, from now on it's Thursdays. Okay, so let's go on to public comment. Do we have? Oh, oh wait. Do we have any public comments?
Yes. Stephen Keeler from Edmonds. Five minutes at the podium.
You want to talk over there and you have five minutes and we can't respond. Okay? And that microphone should be on.
Testing, one, two.
So Councilmember Murray is the only one that... Okay.
We'll make sure Councilmember Murray gets a copy.
All right, thank you. Okay, go right ahead.
Good evening to the council. My name is Stephen Keeler. I'm a resident of Edmonds. I have no children in the Edmonds Public School District. I come here tonight not happy about what I'm about to speak. I come here to speak in opposition to the practices and the philosophy of the Edmonds School District with regard to educating students. I've attended most of the board meetings for the past six years. I have not come to this conclusion lightly. You have a one-page handout. The data you're seeing is from the Office of the Office of Public Instruction for the State of Washington. The website is entitled myreportcard.com. You see two groupings of data, one for the most current school year, 22, '23, and one for the school year 2018 to 2019. That year is significant in that is the full year before we had the COVID fiasco. The data showing students meeting grade level assessment, in my opinion, is horrific. I could throw out other words, but the word horrific works for me. I realize that each of you may not be in a position to attend board meetings, and I find that unfortunate. There will be an election soon for district director positions one and five for the school district. I can only ask that you study this data very carefully, and if you need more, go to the website and look at all the years. Unfortunately, the trend shown by these numbers is not holding constant. It's not increasing. The trend is negative. It's decreasing. I can only ask you in concluding, how will you vote? How should you vote? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Bligschmidt. Five minutes at the podium.
So, this is kind of about the budget, and at the last meeting, I said something about I saw something where there's going to be $50,000 for economic conditions and market analysis. And I think, I think, Laura, you heard me say that maybe. Okay, so I tried to find that again, and I couldn't, but I found it's from proposed changes from the '21 and '22 budget. There's $100,000 allocated unless I have my years wrong for economic conditions and market analysis, which would be $50,000 bucks a year. That's why. I mean, for God's sakes, you can watch Bloomberg on television and find out what the market's going to do or have a really good guess as anybody does at it. And what else? I had something else I was going to mention. I just can't... Well, maybe I will say something. And Steve gave a little talk at the end of the meeting last time about signs getting vandalized. So I told him I'd call the FBI, and I did, and they were about as apathetic as trying to get somebody to give a parking ticket in this town. It's nothing. All they did is take my number and didn't call me back, which I said I wouldn't gripe, but I know two people in my cul-de-sac have called the city, and the city's going to call them back. Didn't happen. And one of them was my wife, and if she comes down here mad, she's tough. She's only this tall. Laura knows how small she is. But one of the people I gripe about or areas I gripe about inferred that he would call her back about a business that was being run on 46 that's where they tidy up cars and that kind of stuff. He's got six or eight cars there in front of his house, and he's driveway all the time. And they did make him move his car off of his lawn, but they never called her back, and those other stuff still there going on. And then there's the concrete business over here on 48th, just north of the new building on the corner, where there's a... Maybe is there a pediatric doctor there right on the corner? Well, coming up the street, the next house has got concrete trucks parked in front of it with all their framework and stuff on it. So they're running a concrete business on Main Street. Maybe that's okay. Whoever... I never did see a sign up saying they wanted a permit to run a business such as I saw in my neighborhood when somebody ran a business, and they're doing a good job. They're keeping their place clean and their vehicles nice. And you know all my bitches are that nothing's getting done, and you told me there would be when we went for a ride, and it hasn't happened. I sure hope it does before long. Thanks.
Do we have any more?
No one else in person. If there's anyone on the online audience who would like to speak, please use your hand raised tool. Going once, going twice. There are no more public comments.
All right, thank you. Okay, so next we go on to the consent calendar. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the consent calendars, items A, B, and C. Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And next is the review of the street vacation for 236 with our associate planner, Sarah Pizzo.
All right. Hello, everybody. I'm going to share my screen with the presentation.
Okay. We're going to have to have you move that microphone a little closer to you.
Okay. How's this?
I think it's better.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Pizzo. I'm an associate planner here at the city, and I'm going to be going over the 236 street vacation proposal in detail today. All right, so I'm going to start with some general street vacation information and then get into the specific requests for 236th Street, and then some background information on the location, zoning, current use, and development potential, and then go over some considerations for city council and present alternatives and a staff recommendation to help you prepare for the November 2nd public hearing on this topic. So some general street vacation information. What is a street vacation? So a street vacation occurs when a local government relinquishes interest in a public right-of-way or public service easement on a piece of property. This doesn't necessarily remove all encumbrances from the area that's vacated. For example, the city can retain easements so that there's future access. And street vacation petitions are typically submitted by property owners adjacent to the right-of-way that they're proposing to vacate, and they need to explain how public use will not be lost or negatively impact future public needs. And then the petition submitted to the government, the local government, which has broad discretion to grant, deny, or condition any approval of a street vacation request. And this is governed by state law, Chapter 13, Point 79, and the RCW, so you can always go there for more information on street vacations. So to go through the process, specific to this proposal, a street vacation petition was received August 5th of 2022, and council adopted a resolution to set the public hearing date on September 18th, 2023. So the public hearing is coming up, and this is a review of the content to help you all prepare for what will be before you regarding this request on November 2nd. And then at the public hearing, as I mentioned, you have the opportunity to approve, deny, condition approval, request additional information, and table the proposal. So those will be your options at the public hearing. And then I wanted to mention, along with process, that street vacations are exempt from SEPA, so there's no environmental review as part of this process. So the 236th street vacation request was received... We received a petition from the adjacent property owners, Sierra MLT LLC and Whiskey 6 LLC, and our city clerk issued a certificate of sufficiency on April 13th of this year, certifying that the petitioners represent 100% of the property that is abutting the street 236th proposed for vacation. And then on September 18th of this year, city council passed a resolution to set the public hearing date for November 2nd. So to refresh your memory, on the reason for the vacation is because the property owners own land adjacent to the area vacation, and they would like to consolidate their lots with this area to create a larger parcel for a future mixed-use development that's close to public transit. And this shows a map of their lots and the area vacation, not just south of 236th Avenue. All right. So some background information. I shouldn't have said avenue. Street southwest. So the location is 236th Street Southwest in Van Rye Boulevard, and you can see an aerial view of this area with the street vacation outlined in pink that they're proposing, and then a map view to the right of it, similarly outlined in pink, the area that they are looking to vacate or have vacated. The zoning and current use of this property, so it's adjacent to parcel zone Town Center One, which allows buildings from six to 12 stories. And the current use of this area is that it's a steep, vegetated hillside. There is a retaining wall that supports the adjacent sidewalk and the street, but this area of the right-of-way in particular is not used for pedestrian or vehicle traffic. And this is an image of our zoning map that shows the Town Center One zoning adjacent to the area vacation, which again is outlined in pink. So the development potential for this area is high. The highest and best use for the property can be achieved through redevelopment, and the street vacation would help facilitate that. And this is showing a Google Street View of 236th Street Southwest in Van Rye, the area vacation, the retaining wall, there's some street amenities, a light pole, a street tree, garbage receptacle, landscaping, and a traffic light. So what should city council consider? Is the property deny direct access from the public right-of-way? If the street vacation were proposed, should the city retain any easement rights? Is compensation for the vacation an option to exercise? And is the vacation in the public interest? So access. The lot adjacent to the area vacation will continue to be accessible from the public right-of-way, 236th Street Southwest. So access to these lots is not going to change dependent upon the vacation. And this is a Google Street View of 236th Street Southwest, looking south. The traffic cones, traffic light, crosswalk, landscaping, and street lights in the sidewalks are shown. Easement rights. So the city can elect to retain easements to the vacated right-of-way for purposes like construction, repair, maintenance of utilities and services, and access. And staff does recommend requiring an easement agreement for a sewer utility, which you can see in the map to the right that's outlined in orange, and for wall maintenance, which is outlined in blue. Compensation. So the city can require compensation for the full appraised value of the area vacated because this area was acquired at public expense. And the petitioner submitted an appraisal that valued this right-of-way for $440,000, or about $80 per square foot. And we had Kenan Williams, who's here next to me with Foster RV PC, who reviewed the appraisal and the method and value, and found that this report reasonably supported is supported by market evidence. So staff recommends that city council require compensation at fair market value for the full appraisal presented if council decides to approve the street vacation. And lastly, public interest. So the vacation followed by a lot consolidation would provide these sites a greater development potential, and that would help the city better achieve the vision of Town Center. And compensation for the street vacation will be used for public benefit through investments in public open space and transportation capital projects in the city. So the alternatives and staff recommendation... Staff is recommending the first alternative, which is to approve the street vacation with conditions. So within 45 days, we would recommend requiring full compensation of the $440,000 per the applicant's appraisal, and granting and recording a sewer utility easement and a wall maintenance easement. The other alternative would be to deny the street vacation request at this time. The city has no obligation or requirement to approve a street vacation. However, to deny it, the city council must identify specific objective facts for that denial, such as a foreseeable need for the right-of-way in the future. But staff has reviewed this, and no such public need has been identified. So staff does not recommend this alternative. And now we have time for discussion and questions. Thank you.
All right. Does anyone have any? Councilmember Sonmore?
I just have a couple of questions. We know that light situation is going to get pretty bad there, and we kind of knew it when it was going in. Is there any need at all to retain this, to have an easement for the city or to make that wider or something in case the traffic gets too bad there?
That question I can bring to the city engineer. I would say that that area is really steep, and it would take a lot of grading in order to get it to be used for vehicle traffic. So my thought is that it probably wouldn't be needed for future road expansion, but that is a good question.
And then the house? It looks like it overlaps into the two-story house driveway. Is that going to be an impediment to that homeowner? It's on this one here.
Lot 18.
The Whiskey Six property.
Yeah, the petitioner owns all the parcels that are touching the street vacation, so you know, they are aware of that. I'm trying to see if the... I think the driveway is just to the right of the area they're proposing, though.
Just as an aside, I believe, as Sarah mentioned, the petitioner on this one owns all of the adjacent parcels, which is why we can surplus it or vacate it to them. It's my understanding that this entire area is going to be redeveloped as part of the process. So wherever that driveway is right now will probably not be where it is after they're done with their application for building permit.
Thank you. You bring me to some other questions. So thanks, Kenan. So it looked like, if you're looking at that one, and I'm sorry, I can't... The one that's the schematic, it looked like we were looking at the two pieces down below. And so I thought I read something that there was three parcels that Roger Collins owned. I know it's Sierra and Whiskey, but he also owns the home, too? Because I was just wondering of easement for the city to get to that home, and if it's owned by them, then that would answer that question. Oh, the green lot?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay. Whiskey owns that one. Okay. And so have they put in anything? Probably they're waiting for this to go through, but do we know of anything that's going to be happening in that area? Can we talk about that at all?
They did submit a pre-application proposal, which is the first step in land use permitting. So it's an opportunity for them to get feedback from the city early on their proposal, but they can't actually apply for anything until they vacate the area, and then they would be able to pursue consolidating the lots, and then they could pursue a site development plan. But we do know that they are interested in doing that and have received a pre-application conference.
And that pre-application would be... Sorry. I don't have my notes, but it would... Oh, T1, so it could be six to 12 stories there with no commercial? So we're maybe anticipating it's going to be all apartments?
They could do commercial. Commercial's not required there, as it is in the... Where the orange squares are, those are the storefront required. And then there's the street. I don't have that map shown, but this property would not be required to do commercial. They could, but it could also be all residential.
And I'm hoping the council, we can go back and look at that. Brian can maybe talk to that more in a minute. I'll be quiet on that one. He's shaking his head. But Kenan, can... Since we have you here, and I love picking your brain because you know all this stuff, how did you come... Can you kind of do the background of how you come to $80? Is it too also based on the slope? Because you know, that's the gateway into Mount Lake Terrace. And so I'd like to say it's 100, but can you kind of explain how you came to that?
Yeah, I think that you could argue that it would be worth more, okay? But others could argue that it'd be worth less, too. One of the things that they did in valuing this, you have to value on a street vacation what's called a cross-the-fence methodology. In other words, if you look at the piece of property as it sits right now, it'd be considered sort of this really oddball piece of property. It's a whole. It's got all these problems, no access, everything else. So you have to look at it as, you know, what's the property adjacent to it really worth? And so when I looked at it, they looked at the comparable sales. David Chesdick is an MAI appraiser that I know fairly well. When I looked at his comparable sales, everything seemed very well supported. I will tell you from just other valuations that I've done in and about the area, properties in Kirkland right now, similarly zoned are going for about $100, $110 a square foot. Mount Lake Terrace, Snohomish County, always, it gets a discount. The mayor and I were talking about that. I think in a couple of years, maybe people aren't going to be giving it the discount. It depends on what you do and what happens here. Because I did take an opportunity to drive through the area just on my way here from my home. I thought, you know, I'm just going to take a look at it again. I knew what it looked like, and I'm amazed at the growth that's going on there right now. Transit-oriented development is going to be working for you, and I think once the light rail station opens up, you're going to probably see a bigger bump in value.
And so, Kenan, by the time it opens up, it'll be too late. That property would be gone. So do we have to do the $80? Can we do the $100? Since if you look at how they're trying to consolidate properties around there now and looking at some lowballing and some highballing that had been going on, are we in the market to be able to do that at all?
Well, if you did, you'd want to go out and get another appraisal and see how bad that was off. I will just say from experience and from looking at, it seems reasonably supported. Whether it's the highest price you can get, probably not. It's also not the lowest price. It just seems, based on everything and the valuation date, this seems to be supported and not out of line.
And I just have a curiosity question, too, and thank you, Kenan, very, very much. On the Pace Engineering Service Company, and we've had this before, how come they hyphenate Mount Lake? Is that...
I have no idea.
I've seen weird stuff like that before, and I'm always wondering why. Or I've seen documents come in, they spelled the city's name wrong, but I was just wondering, when I saw the block, I was wondering, is that from when the city was incorporated? Are they citing that parcel division number like that?
Yeah, it's from the original plat. So on the plat, they spelled it that way back then, and then it carries through on these types of documents.
So that piece of property has never been plotted or platted out?
It has, and at the time that it was, that's how Mount Lake was spelled. So...
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's a really simple...
It's tiny.
A simple, simple question is, the block two, what all does that entail in there? And I know you mentioned it's original. I was just kind of curious because I remember that property from years ago and how it was undevelopable and how we had the school nestled in in there. And so I was just wondering, has it always been at easement?
Well, there's never an always in property because everything keeps changing. I'm sure that... I'm sure that when they originally platted it, it came out of, you know, like Lot 5, Block 5, such and such, and then you're getting into section lines and things like that. But whoever did this addition originally, probably in the '30s, that's the way they laid it out.
Good deal.
One thing I did want to mention, though, you know, with reference to the values and things like that, we are, of course, one of the recommendations is to retain the easements for right now, too. And within that, there's going to be some development conditions, too, whenever they come through and do this, because essentially that retaining wall right now that supports the road, when they develop this property, it's going to be basically your foundation wall on the new structure. So they're going to be replacing under what we've seen so far, and which makes sense, is that the wall that we use right now to support the road is going to be replaced with a wall that not only supports the road but serves as the foundation for their building. So we're going to make sure that those parts are covered.
And just since you're here, can you explain those easements a little bit? What exactly does that mean for the city? I mean, they can't take a truck in there. What can they actually do with that easement?
Okay, so the easements that we have right now, basically, it says that the way we envision this and the way everyone's agreed to it is that that sewer line and that wall easement will stay there until such time as they're no longer necessary. And they will only become, no, not necessary, once those lines, once the sewer line is replaced and rerouted, and once this new structure is completed. That's when it goes away.
So they go away after it's built?
Yeah. So you're familiar with slope easement? Okay, so slope easements are generally where the road is one level, and then you have the adjacent ground, another level. Let's say it's higher up, and so you have this slope easement. Well, if you raise the road, then the slope easement kind of goes away, just like if where you have, where you need to put the slope, then you build a building there and you put in a retaining wall, or build a structure up, you no longer need that slope easement. It goes away just because it's no longer necessary. That's what's going to happen in this case, too. Basically, what we're doing is, is we're going to change the geography of the area, and by doing so, that eliminates the need for one of those easements. The other easement will go away because it's no longer necessary.
And so, sorry, since you're here, what happens if there were a stream? And, you know, there is a stream down there, but on all properties like this vacation property, all of them in our city do not require a SEPA review? Because it said exempt from SEPA. So I'm just kind of wondering, because there's a creek down there.
Yeah, so that's the vacation part, okay? You've got to remember, you're talking about the street vacation, not dealing with the stream.
Right. I just was wondering with the groundwater coming off.
So dealing with the stream and the groundwater and everything else, that's going to be a separate process. It's just who owns that piece of property at this point.
So it'll be...
It'll be addressed in the permit.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sarah's going to correct me.
No, no. Yeah, I was just going to say that essentially, the street vacation is changing ownership, right, from the city to a property owner. And so the state doesn't require environmental review, because that act itself doesn't change any environmental... The state of the environment, I guess.
Are you done? Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Sonmore, for getting to all of my questions before me. But I'd just be really curious, given the mention of the stream and/or that drainage, the topography there. I know this is a separate matter, but perhaps at a future meeting, we... Or through the city manager, could get some information about sort of what the reality of that sort of stream drainage and, you know, the sort of seasonal sort of drainage that comes down through Veterans Park, where sort of water flows, and any other considerations that council might need to be mindful of. Know that we've, you know, changed that site drastically over the past 10 years with Van Rye being graded up to 236 and so on. But, you know, without getting too much farther afield, this conversation about EIS, et cetera, it'd be helpful to have that background information for council. And while I've got the mic, I think, you know, the matter of the street vacation makes good sense, and I think you both have answered some of the other questions that I had while Councilmember Sonmore was asking. So I think that's it for me.
All right. Anyone else? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the report. Thank you for the insights as well into what we're looking at. And to kind of build upon where Councilmember Donovan Payne just was, my daughter was in the last entering kindergarten class in Evergreen Elementary in the basin down there. So really, it's more just a curiosity question of, is this really just pieces of the property that got left behind? Like, I'm trying to understand, because you'd come down 237th, you'd kind of swing around, you would see that little hillside, and you could see 236 up there, but then you swing back around, kind of where Van Rye Boulevard picks up, theoretically speaking, and there was a school there. Really, I'm just curious, why is that? How do we own that? Like, was it just, we own that, and we separated it out, and it got left behind? Like, why do... How does it even come to be about, I guess, is what I'm saying? Because I agree that the topography was different back then, but it still begs the question, why do we own that piece and nothing else around that?
It's my understanding from kind of hanging around here for a long, long time was, I think that when I first started working on some of this project, that was actually leftover walls dot right of way. So when they... I-5 come, you know, they take huge swaths. And as I recall, that was part of Washington State Department of Transportation, then they ended up surplusing part of it. And then when we changed the road, and because of the topography, that little piece was just basically left over.
Thank you. Like I said, I have no other questions. I think you've done a wonderful job of explaining it. Wonderful question from our colleagues here, but it still is remaining, like, why is this even an issue?
Yeah.
You have another question?
It's not a question. It's just, you hear me asking Kenan so many questions. Kenan, can you just say how long you've been really working for the city? Because I don't know if all of our council members have actually met you before, and I just wanted to take this opportunity, because I haven't seen you in a few years either, and congratulations on your marriage.
No, thank you.
But the reason I'm asking all these...
And yours as well.
Oh, thank you. The reason I'm asking all this question is Kenan really knows his stuff, and he's been doing this a long time. And I just really appreciate you still being on our team and coming in and doing this work for us. And just, I know Rick knows, and I wasn't sure if everybody had met, and Aaron's on the phone, and so I just wanted to take that time to acknowledge you and thank you for all your work with the city and just kind of introduce you to the council.
Thank you. I can't remember the exact year that I started working with you, but it was when you had the old city hall before the other old city hall. And then I helped you with the former city hall, and then the next city hall, and now this city hall. So it's been a while. I think it's been at least 20-something years that I've been hanging around here, helping you guys out. And I enjoy it. You have a great team. I know there's been a lot of turnover, but Sarah's been an absolute joy to work with. She's, you know, I feel like I haven't really had to do that much, other than say, look at my old stuff and pull it together, and then we talk about it. And, you know, I'm giving her the opportunity to learn from this. So, you know, the next time I do it, it's pretty much just, hey, Kenan, here's my package. Would you take a look at it and see what comes of it? And she's doing a great job.
Are you... Did you have... You must have. Mayor Protam?
No, thank you. Actually, not a whole lot, but I did want to touch on a point that Councilmember Sonmore brought up on the commercial use topic, and it's not necessarily for this specific consideration, but since you brought it up, it is something that we do, you know, since we upzone or rezone or redid our town center plan, subdivision plan, sub-area plan, we've learned a few things, and we've intended for some things that haven't happened, or we were oversights or missed. Anyway, there's a lot of things that we've... Opportunities we have, let's say, for the comprehensive plan update process, and this is one of them, is taking a look at what's required and what's not required, and how to really best utilize our town center and balancing residential and commercial use, and what's required, what's not required, where it's required, how it's required, why it's required, and why it's important. So just again, a reminder about how important this town center... Sorry, the comprehensive plan update is as we move forward for over the next year and a half in addressing, and this is an area that, as you touched on, there's nothing we can do about it now. It's, and, you know, I'm sure they're going to have a great plan. We'll be excited to review their plan that they've, as it comes forward. But it is... But let's hope for some commercial use on the ground floor, because that's what we really intended, what we'd really like to see, especially on 236 and, you know, and throughout our town center areas, really maximizing both commercial and residential use in the town center area. So excited about the future. Let's keep moving forward. Thank you.
Especially on Main Street. All right, anyone else? I don't see Aaron's hand going up, so, okay? All right. So we're going to continue this on November 2nd, when we have our public hearing.
Yes.
All right, then. I guess that's it for tonight, then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so next will be the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam, members of council, a couple of things to mention this evening. First, you may have seen a story in the Everett Herald about bicentennial park. It was a terrific story, just a couple of things to highlight. That project was started in 2010 by an Eagle Scout named Joshua Hayes and Girl Scout troop, 43752, also contributed quite a bit to that project. Just got finished, and it looks great, and we appreciate all the volunteer efforts to make that trail a reality and make that area much more accessible. Secondly, on, let's see here, the lots more arts and crafts programs going on to activate. One of the rooms in the pavilion is part of the master plan. You may have seen that. We have quite a lot of interest in those programs, so that's a great thing. Many of you participated in the ribbon cutting last week for Heart Art Studios, so that was a fun event as well. Wanted to let you know as well that the communications for the water utility rates for 2024 will be going out soon. We discussed that a little bit, and wanted to let the community know before the next year starts, along with the communications for the new utility billing program that's going, is slated to go out in mid-November. Wanted to remind everybody, on Thursday, I believe, the 19th, at 10:19 a.m., we have the Great American Shakeout, which is the earthquake preparedness event. Just to remind everybody how we can be prepared in the event of an earthquake. We are on the West Coast, so something very important to keep in mind. And lastly, as the mayor mentioned, open the meeting, our meetings on Mondays, starting in November. First one will be November 2nd, and that'll be at 7:00 p.m. here, and that's a business meeting. And then on the 9th, we'll have your work session, and then another business meeting on the 16th. So it'll just be every Thursday, excepting those months that have five Thursdays or holidays, which the 23rd would be Thanksgiving, and I'm sure we will all much rather, well, 7 o'clock, so we'll probably be asleep in front of the television at this point on Thanksgiving Day, but maybe that's just me. But that's all I have, and happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the city manager? Oops. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. The shakeout on the 19th, appreciate that. So, one, I think I... First question is, if any council member is interested in doing that with the city, can we come here and you'll have a spot for us, or?
Don't really have an event planned for it. It's more this year, a series of videos, but I do know one of the goals that the council has is to increase our emergency preparedness, not only for ourselves but our community. This is one of those events that we're starting to get the ball rolling on that.
Okay.
So be happy to share those videos with council, and we can email those out, no problem. But getting that started again is a priority for us.
Perfect. Second question requires context. As timing has it, we had an earthquake. Some of us felt it, some of us didn't feel it. I didn't feel it, but nonetheless, it happened. On the off-chance it should happen in here, what exactly are we supposed to do? Like, where's our safe space? Because there's a lot of high beams, a lot of stuff above me. I'm not sure if this is set up to be the table underneath I should go, so I figure we should ask that today.
Yeah, so growing up in earthquake country in Alaska and California myself, I've been through quite a few of these door frames, and that hallway right back there is probably the best place that you can be. Under the desk is definitely the best alternative. In a larger event, we will, we are putting together what's called a comprehensive emergency management plan. I'm not sure what the date of the last one is, but Carolyn and I talked about that just late last week, and we'll be updating that. That will have steps you take depending on what the severity of the incident is, and we'll try to outline all that and cover many scenarios. I don't want to say all, but many.
Can I just follow up?
Oh, go ahead.
So what I'm understanding... Good questions. I always like to know that, too. So this hallway is more safer than underneath our desk, is what you're saying? Because right there, there's only one story, and I'm seeing two stories above us, and so I'm wondering, and I don't know if that's cement or whatever that is, but...
Acoustic fiber board, yeah.
Where is the safest? Is in here?
So back in that, there's, if you'll remember from the last tour we took, there's a larger opening going into a small storage closet there, where there'd be several, probably all seven of you could fit underneath that door frame.
The storage unit is in this hall?
Right behind this hall, yeah.
I don't see any other hands going up, not even Councilmember Murray. So, all right. Thank you. So now we can go on to the council liaison reports, and I will start over. You want to start on it, Rick?
Thank you, Mayor. On October 5th, I attended our work-study session, and then on the 10th, I was at the Left One Retirement Board. Then on the 11th, I met for a city manager six-month evaluation meeting. Then on the 12th, I was at the ribbon cutting for the Heart Art Studio. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On... Yeah, excuse me. Sorry about that. On October 4th, my report starts with the comprehensive plan update meeting that we had in this room, along with the planning commission and our comp plan contractors. I was also on the... Also attended the work-study session on the 5th. On the morning of Friday, October 6th, I think you and I attended the Seashore Transportation Alliance meeting. I think the highlights of that conversation for me was some of the conversation around legislative priorities for that group, and just a reminder that membership in that group is largely sort of northwest King County, so shoreline to Seattle, Kenmore Lake Forest Park, might be a few others, and then our city and Edmunds are there. So there's a good mix of legislative priorities, and I think the one that, while it's not within our city... I think the one that, while it's not within our city, it is in Snohomish County and does impact the interurban trail. There is a proposal for inclusion on seashore legislative priorities for a study that would potentially set the groundwork for a bike and pedestrian bridge over State Route 104, which would really reduce a lot of barriers in sort of connecting our two counties together, where there's currently a rather risky pedestrian crossing across that, that state highway. Carrying on, on the 11th of October, I met with Andrew Needitz to do the city manager evaluation, the six-month city manager evaluation. On the 13th, which was this last Friday, I participated in a forum with the Snow Track Alliance regarding housing and transportation policy perspectives. And now I'm here, and that ends my report.
All right. I'll go to Councilmember Murray. Probably should have let you know ahead of time.
No, that's okay. Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna say, it's been a while since I've had to navigate on this end, so just took me a minute. Going back to October 2nd through the 8th, I participated in the Week Without Driving. It was a really good opportunity to leave my keys at home for the most part and navigate our community and my life, you know, either walking or utilizing public transportation, figuring out rides from friends, you know, and an occasional ride share to get to the things that we needed to do that week. And I think it's one, it's something that I've participated in the last couple of years, and I think a positive takeaway from my perspective is that, you know, I think intentional focus and education matter, I think that's been clear. And when we look at trash bins in particular, which I know has been a hot topic the last couple of years, but really appreciate city staff's efforts to educate our community on, because we have different, you know, kind of infrastructure in different parts of the community, where is the best place to put those. And I think that that was clear, you know, versus the first year I did this two years ago and this year, that most folks by and large are putting their, their trash bin and recycling bin and yard waste bin in a place where it is not impeding, you know, people that are using the sidewalk or bike lanes, which was great. I think my, my kind of takeaway on the other side, there was lots of them, but I think kind of the, the clear one for me was that, you know, how many people told me I could never do that. And I think that is a, an interesting sentiment, and it is one that is reflective of, I think, our lives and our infrastructure and, you know, the way that we've built things. But it, I think it's a really challenging perspective when any of us at any time could, could potentially lose mobility and the access to be able to drive a vehicle. And then what, right? So I am excited to, I think, share perspectives as we go through the comprehensive planning process. But, but I do think that that was an important takeaway, is that for most folks, that feels, even just to do it for a week, feels like a challenge that is not feasible. And that's reflective on, I think, choices. And many of those choices are choices that are, you know, that we, at a city council level. And so I'm excited to have those conversations here as we move forward in the next year and a half. On the 4th, joined the special council meeting for our comprehensive plan kind of kickoff. And that was great to see all of the folks that had volunteered to be part of that advisory committee, as well as the planning commission. And so I felt like I learned a lot, even though I've seen kind of different pieces of the presentation, and so appreciated the time carved out to do that and also just to bring us together and build connectivity. The 7th was the Edmund School District Foundation's 5K and Jamboree and Futsal Tournament, which was fun to stop by with my kids and family for a bit and appreciate all of the work that they do in support of our school district. On the 10th, joined the Snohomish County, Snohomish and Island County Labor Council Champions Dinner up in Everett, which was, again, just a good opportunity to see folks doing work in our community, you know, be recognized and talk about their accomplishments. The 11th, joined our, joined Andrew at City Hall for the six-month evaluation of our city manager for my meeting for that. The 12th was at the ribbon cutting for the Heart Art Studio, which was really exciting. It was, I would love to congratulate Cynthia and her entire family. They are a Mount Lake Terrace family who has decided, both her and her partner have opened businesses here in Mount Lake Terrace. And I just think that is a really cool thing. And, you know, I think reflects, you know, that people who live here see the value of, you know, investing, you know, and sharing their, their time and talents with our community. And I just, I think that is a really neat thing, and I'm excited to see that continue. And then on the 13th, was able to join the Snow Track series on Snohomish County Transportation and got to see our own council member Payne Donovan share, share perspectives, as well as several other city council members from across the county, sharing their perspectives and experiences around transportation. And I just, I get a lot of value from hearing kind of what it is like and what it's like in different places. They had representatives from, you know, the south part of the county, as well as, you know, kind of north as well. And so I think it was a good learning opportunity and appreciated them taking the time to share. So, and I think with that, that completes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And we'll go on the other side here to Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me back up and begin, as though this was the beginning of the month, and say, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And so for anyone whose family was touched by this horrible disease, I can empathize deeply with you. My birth mother passed away when I was nine, which is probably why I am the way I am. And you can take that any way you need to, because I know I do every morning. That said, as we move through the month, I too, on the 4th, had the opportunity to join us. This was my second time with our comprehensive plan advisory group, although it was great to be all together, although once again, I had to be online, and that was just a safety precaution thing. We are still in the midst of a pandemic. I do have my flu shot and my booster, and I'm encouraging anyone else to do that. Please do. Have patience when you go, because it took about an hour. On the 7th, I too was at the Edmund School District 5K and Futsal Tournament. I was working the registration desk, so thank you all who came through. That was a lot of fun, trying to get you registered through workarounds, because we lost our internet access, and that was something else. So we ended up getting it going. We started a little bit late, but I can tell you, when we started the 5K, I film, I think you know that's my language of love, is to film and photograph things. Well, I filmed, and it was over two solid minutes of the community going by in these beautiful pink shirts, picking up some energy on this 5K. So two solid minutes of people going. We don't have the number yet. I'm in the foundation. I'll hear that number, I think, tomorrow morning, so I can report back in November if you're interested in how much we actually raised. But thank you for everybody who took the time to either advertise it, show up, or participate. I very much appreciate you. Later that day on the 7th, I also had the chance to go to the Lynnwood Library, where they put on a wonderful Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. It was just lovely, a great panel of wide perspectives of the experience, mostly from a leadership standpoint, with the speakers that they had, at least the part that I saw, where they had a full day of activities. So that was just my segment that I was able to make it on. Moving forward, on the 10th, I went out to the Stilly Valley, which is Arlington area, because they put on an actual candidate forum. And I paused to share, I wouldn't normally share that, because I do that quite a bit, actually, but shared in this context to double back to an earlier comment at the public comments section about our last time together and talking about the vandalized signs. Well, as promised to our residents, much like our colleague here, John, if I tell you I'm going to do something, I'm going to do it, which is, I did, in fact, speak with Judge Muyarte, who was one of the panelists afterwards, and shared what was going on in our city. I made the plea that based on what we see, that we can isolate, that it's probably in his interest to make a statement as well about this not being something that we can tolerate. But I was met, much like with the FBI scrapbook, I was saying, I was met with the same kind of FBI response. The feedback I was given was, it's happening to me, too. I've had over 300 signs destroyed. I thought, that's interesting response. And I'm not going to put out a statement. I already said something on Facebook, which I did try to find, but I couldn't find. But, you know, that was his right to say, no, I'm not going to, but just want our residents to know. I told you I would follow up. I did. I was a little surprised by the response, but it is what it is. I usually like to show you that I have evidence that I had this conversation. So I asked for a selfie with Cameron Hannon. He politely declined because he, quote-unquote, wanted to meet some other people. I said, that's, you're right. You take care. So, moving forward, which is what I always do, is we move on to that evening. The fates were just on my side. I ended up at the Labor Council Dinner, where it appeared as though we were going to sit at the same table. And miraculously, when dinner started, we were not at the same table. I think it was just a coincidence. But it was a wonderful Labor Council Dinner, which Councilmember Murray mentioned earlier, I think earlier, you said earlier, that we sat together at that. And it was just a wonderful opportunity to see how the electeds are working with the unions, I think is the easiest way to say that, just labor champions, really. I don't think it has to be about unions, but unions are always about labor and champion that. But it's a wonderful experience. Moving forward, on the 11th, I too had the honor of seeing our former city manager, Andrew, to do our current six-month review of our current city manager. I thought it went really well. We left that room laughing, which is probably in the interest of our current city manager. And then later that same note, then moved on to the next day. That morning, we attended the Leadership Snohomish County Leadership Day, which was just a great opportunity to be in the space and see other folks from Snohomish County who are doing this great work. Then that luncheon later that afternoon was at the Domestic Violence Services of Snohomish County. October is also Domestic Violence Prevention Month, so they had their wonderful gala and luncheon, a powerful speaker, first-person story of just telling, really, to call her a survivor, well, it seemed such like a misuse of the term. It was so much bigger than that. And so really disrespect for anyone who's going through that process right now, or unfortunately being silenced and having to live it in silence. Know that places like Domestic Violence Services of Snohomish County are here for you and have lots of resources to help get you out of that situation. I got to end the day a little bit more positively from where I was sitting with his, which is, I got to go to our ribbon cutting and then end it with all of you at our study session. And then last but not least, on Saturday, our Ivy League had another wonderful gathering here at our Veterans Park and did wonderful work with that beautiful eclipse. We actually got a moment to see the eclipse while we were doing that work. And when I say we were doing that work, I dropped off supplies and went to the Husky Games. Go Dogs.
All right. Okay, Councilmember Solmore?
On October 10th, I attended Left One with Councilman Ryan, where we approved claims for our retired police officers. And also that night, I attended the Park and Rec Board. We talked about our Eagle Scouts and how many we had to finish the bicentennial park. And you'll see that in the Herald news, news article that came out. It was really kind of nice how they showed how each segment was finished. But overall, Ken showed us a PowerPoint of everything that's happened in that park. And I can't tell you how proud I was to see it and what a legacy for Ken. It's taken many, many years to get the park where it's at. But all the things and all the people that had to come together to get that park where it's at now and where it came from, from 1976, when we were all there when it opened. And so it's changed quite a bit, but it's a very nice peaceful park that I go to quite often. And so it was just a lovely experience to see this PowerPoint. Ken really would like to come in and show you all that, too. It's unbelievable. At the Park and Rec Board, we talked about food forest and food gardener, gardens. We had Robin come in, who is wanting to have a community garden. And we talked a lot about where it would go, how it would survive, where, how it would get water, how it, it couldn't be maybe where the July 3rd, where all the people sit. There was tons and tons of questions asked about that. She's very passionate about that. We talked about possible scholarships. We talked about the ARBA funds that are running out for this year and will be used up for next year for the youth and adults to, they have to demonstrate, this sounds horrible, poverty threshold in order to get the $250 cap scholarship. We talked about how Verdant and the city has offered swim lessons and how positive that's been. We talked about Michelle Ringers. If you remember her, a long time ago, she worked at the pavilion. There's still a scholarship there. And I think this year, it's up to $1,400 that they've collected, and that's private donations. When people come in, they drop off money into a container, or they can send in a check. We've talked about how people can get reduced childcare rates. The state may match or maybe give a subsidy, and there's a couple other ways. But we're very proud to be able to have childcare on three locations. We reviewed the 2023 work plan, and that will be going to council soon. We talked about the tree board and how a tree company, I believe they took down a wrong tree, and so they're going to be replacing it, replacing that tree with three. And they'll probably be buying maples to add color to the hillside. This is from Ken. You know, who thinks about that? But, and then we heard from our chair, and she talked about how there is going to be the Pooper Troopers that are going to come in and give doggy bags at the Ballenger Park on either end of the trail, because people have been wanting to have doggy bags there. Talked about pool rentals. There's an article about one of the cities doing away with their tennis courts and how their citizens are very unhappy with that. But we, you know, we talked about how we're going to be updating our tennis courts and possibly having a pickleball incorporated in it, and everyone was very happy with that. And then, boy, we talked about a whole bunch of different things. There's three scout projects coming up, or I guess there's one, and it's coming up after the other two that have already been done. And Ken will tell us more about that. And we talked about the NPIS Terrace Ridge Playground Equipment and the slides that are broken at Candy King Park. But these meetings sometimes go on for two or three hours, and they're very informative, and I can never take enough notes. And then, thank you for asking about the earthquake. I appreciate that. And then I just had one question. I did attend the comp plan with the committee, and I've been asked about those meetings. And I don't know if you've sent them to me, but they said, somebody said the days have changed for the committees. They're still going to be on their original day, or?
Yeah, they are. The next one's scheduled for, I believe, October 25th. And we can get you that schedule. I believe I sent that to all council members, but I can send that out again. It is, it is on the website, but I will make sure that you get that again.
They had mentioned something was originally on Wednesday, and then they moved to Thursdays or something. I don't know the background, so I'm just asking.
No, I don't. I don't believe the days have changed.
Good deal. That's all.
All right. Thank you. So Mayor Protam, return.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So let's see, on the 4th, I also attended the Comp Plan 101 with the City Council Planning Commission and the committee, update committee. And then I'm going to come back to the 5th. On the 11th, had the six-month city manager review with Andrew. On the 12th, had the Heart Art Studio grand opening and had our council work session. Then going back to the 5th, had the Pushe Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board meeting, where we discussed quickly a recent, had a recap on the transit oriented development event that they held back in September. Also recapped the Summer Planning Academy. I remember I may have mentioned that. And then we talked about the 2024 Legislative Update and had a regional centers data report. I'm going to jump back to the Planning Academy, because, you know, in my travels, one of the things I've, I've seen a lot of is to, activities or things to do in a community is a scavenger hunt. And so I've been thinking about when the, at some point down the line, bringing, bringing up the scavenger hunt for something we can do here at Mount Lake Terrace. But the Planning Academy actually highlighted it as something that they did to help with planning, you know, teaching kids about planning. And remember, the Planning Academy is about, you know, introducing kids to the planning profession and kind of giving them some ideas of what planning is all about and kind of directing them in the path of, if they were interested in getting involved in planning. But I thought of this as, as an opportunity to help educate our community about the comprehensive plan update. And so I got some more information on the scavenger hunt that they did through PSRC, the Planning Academy, and I'm going to forward that on. And just the thought that we might want to use that scavenger hunt as a way to...
And just the thought that we might want to use that scavenger hunt as a way to help bring some excitement to the Comprehensive Plan Update and kind of share some ideas about, you know, what is, you know, what we're trying to get at and what we're visioning in our planning for the future and what is this type of a planning or what is this? Anyway, looking forward to sharing that and seeing if there's a way we can use that in our Comprehensive Plan Update. Also, at the end of that session, I actually attended this one in person. And at the end of the, the meeting, we had a, for those of you who don't know, Puget Sound Regional Council has a, their, their location is right down on the waterfront in downtown Seattle. And you may remember, I had talked about they are relocating because they, you know, were right behind the viaduct. And now that the viaduct gone, that property has skyrocketed and is now a very valuable piece of property, which we as a community, as a government, should not be taking that property. So we're moving to a new location. But, but in the meantime, they still have that for a few more years. And we had a personal tour of the waterfront and the redevelopment that's going on there. And if you haven't been down there recently to downtown Seattle, it is beautiful. And it's about a year away from being complete, but they've done a remarkable job since the viaduct has come down and how they're turning that place into a really, a great sense of, of, anyway, it's a great place to go visit Seattle and see the waterfront and what they've done there and the direction they're going and how they've turned that into a people-oriented location. So that, I believe, concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So for my report, I'm going to start on October 4th. I attended the Snohomish, the South County Mayor's Meeting. And we have a great group of mayors, and we really, really just open up and talk about what we're doing in our cities. And then later that evening, I attended the Advisory Board and the Planning Commission and Council for the Comp Plan. And it was really great to see what we're going to be working on. On the 5th of October, I attended the CT, the Community Transit Board Meeting, and that's when we voted to give more money for the Zipcar, because it's really working. And, and hopefully, eventually, it will be so affordable to, you know, it costs a lot of money to have a Zipcar that uses an Orca card, which is $2.50, free for everybody under 18, and only a dollar for seniors. So, so we're going to continue that project in Linwood, hopefully moving on to Mount Lake Terrace in the near future. On the 6th of October, in the morning, 7:30 in the morning, I attended the Seashore Transportation Forum. And to, to piggyback on what Councilmember Payne Donovan was saying about the Seashore Forum, is that it is King County. It's, the voting members are Shoreline, Lake Forest Park, and Seattle. And the non-voting members are Ken Moore and everyone around there. And we, in Snohomish County, border King County, so it should be Edmonds and, and Mount Lake Terrace. And so finally, we have an Edmonds person coming on a regular basis, and that'll be Councilmember Susan Payne. And because for a long time, we didn't have any, anyone from Edmonds showing up. Oh, I've been on it for 15 years, and I've only missed, what, a half a dozen meetings in all that time. So I know when the Edmonds people showed up and when they didn't. And then, what I like about it is I find out a lot about the transportation, because the border between King County and Snohomish County is an invisible line, and yet in transportation, it's a concrete wall. And we have to get people, we have to get people and, and buses and other types of transportation going back and forth, so that if you're, if you're a person who needs to have transit, cannot drive. In the old days, my girlfriend's son, it took him half a day to go from Shoreline to his work in, in Linwood, five miles away, because of all the ways you had to go back and forth. The one person that attends the meeting, he lives in Lake Forest Park, and the meeting is in Shoreline City Hall. He has to catch the early morning bus to downtown Seattle and then take another bus from downtown Seattle to Shoreline. I mean, my goodness. We, we can do better than that. Okay, so, and then on the 12th, I attended, I also did the city manager evaluation, and then I attended the Hart Art Studio ribbon cutting, and I'm really glad to see more ribbon cuttings coming. That means more businesses coming to Mount Lake Terrace, more variety of businesses, and more things for our citizens to do. And I could not attend the Snow Track Meeting this last Friday, because I had other things that I had on my plate. But I'm also going to be on the panel this Friday for the South County Mayor's and the Snow Track Panel for transportation. And that is the end of my report. Okay? All right, so next is new business. Does anyone have any new business? Councilmember Salmor?
I would just like to have an upcoming agenda item to talk about vehicles, code enforcement, and hazardous materials, so the, all of us can get very educated on this. It's Chapter 1010, 815, Chapter 15. If we can then maybe meet our new code enforcement. I know we've had changes over time, and I was trying to find out when we last had a report on that and ask them how they go about putting violations on their list, how big their list is, but just understanding it more. We, just some background, we used to talk a lot about RVs and how they couldn't go over the sidewalk and if they could be on the side of the house. But it would be just nice to kind of go over it all together. It always seems like things are changing. What it says here on the site is, "The purpose of the Mount Lake Terrace Municipal Nuance and Parking Codes is created to maintain a safe and healthy city for residents, businesses, and visitors. The program helps prevent crime," and that would be a big one, since we know crime is increasing injury and illness and devaluing property. So maybe that devaluing property is an interesting one now, but just so that we get all on the same page and then we know what's going on with hazardous conditions, because Councilman Murray brought up garbage and garbage, you know, putting it out and different things. But it would be nice just to have a report out, so. And we've also had a lot of issues with an update on house areas that don't comply. So that's something new, too, that we haven't talked about in a little bit, but has changed. And that's all I have.
All right. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, actually, I agree. I was going to ask the city manager to follow up with John about the code enforcement and where we're at, what we're doing. And I know John's been very patiently, anxiously patiently over the last many years now, talking to all of us. Yeah.
We're just like, school or town kind of refrigerator in every front yard, like I just run for office in Linwood right now.
Yes, so, so yes, let's please follow up with John and update him on, on, on two things. One is update him on what we have done, the progress we've made, and I guess that would be part of the report that we can have to the council, because we, I'm going to take you up on the fact that we haven't made any progress. We have been working on, we've been hearing you, and we are slowly, very slowly, making progress on this issue. But there is a lot to be done. That's, I'd like to, I'd like to have you talk to John about some of the things that haven't been done, things that we keep hearing about that have been challenges, that haven't been addressed yet, that need to be addressed. And, and so, anyway, follow up with John, follow up with John, and, and then get back to us about what kind of progress, about your conversation and what kind of progress we're making there, and then maybe we can have that as part of the presentation in the future. The other thing I wanted to own up to was that the $100,000 for the economic development, economic development. And if you can talk to him about that, it was more than just the economic profile, it's for economic development. Right. It's, it's, it's going to a lot of different things. It's basically economic development, planning, marketing, the economic development strategy, is also working with the Chamber and the Economic Alliance and creating that partnership to be able to help us make progress. At any rate, it's to help us address economic development and prepare us for the future. Love to chat with you after the meeting or in the future about economic development, but did want to make sure that we are following up and addressing the code enforcement and, and issues that John's been raising for many, many years. Thank you.
This is our, it's, it's for people on the dais that we can talk right now. Did you have something?
Yes, I had something separate, but while we're...
This is new business, so you can bring anything up.
Great, well, fancy that. Well, just to, while we're piggybacking on Councilmember Salmor's request, I think one thing, and perhaps this is, can be parceled out by staff, whatever, however it makes sense, you know, I think we've heard from some, some businesses, especially in newer development areas where, you know, I'm thinking of down on Van Ryde Boulevard, where there's been some, some issues with delivery zones. It's, you know, we can think about town center areas where there are more multifamily buildings, and there are some, you know, I think we, we hear, or I hear about folks with concerns about parking enforcement, ticketing. I think, you know, as we, you know, talk about and sort of plan for a denser town center, it would be helpful to understand options about how to better sort of manage parking on, on sort of street fronts, especially where there are impacts to businesses and, you know, pedestrian safety, especially on my mind. So maybe add that to the list, but I think it's sort of in, in line with the sort of, you know, public safety and sort of other sort of nuisance type sort of language that's in code now. Switching over to, to the other, the first thing I wanted to speak up about in new business is, I've been reflecting on some conversations we've had, I think, with the consultants that we've hired to help us with the 20-year comprehensive plan. And I think we, we raised some questions and concerns about the outreach plan and sort of equitable sort of engagement across the city. We heard, I think, even more sort of robustly in the meeting we had back, I think on October 4th, with the Planning Commission and the, the group that's been convened to, to, you know, work on the Comprehensive Plan, that there are real concerns about doing outreach to, you know, those who might not otherwise be engaged. And at least for my, to my ears, you know, I think city staff and, and the consultants have, have made a strong effort, but it's still not quite sure, or I'm concerned that it's not quite meeting the mark in terms of reaching folks who, you know, are renters, who, you know, are, might not speak English as a first language, et cetera. So, you know, I'd welcome any sort of conversation with staff about how we better resource that. I'm thinking right now is sort of the best time to sort of have a conversation about if we need to spend more money on that, if we need to sort of tweak our outreach plan or how we do better in reaching those folks. Because I think, you know, now is, is the best time to ensure that we have the most inclusive sort of outreach, so that we have sort of outcomes in the Comprehensive Plan that, that fully recognize the experience of, of all of our residents and, and plan for those needs in the future. So, you know, I'm bringing this up in hopes that we can have a conversation about, you know, either, as I said, paying for more robust outreach, or if there are ways that we can get inventive and like, you know, make sure we're, we're reaching folks who, I think, you know, the, the current sort of outreach numbers sort of suggest there might be gaps in reaching. So, no, that's not a very specific ask now, but I would, would love, love some response from staff perhaps at our next work session.
All right. Do I see any other hands of Councilmember Woodard?
Just want to echo, I agree with your statement. I've heard some good ideas. I've heard the idea of a QR code floating around that we could put at businesses or folks just kind of going through their day-to-day basis. It's in their path already, and click on that and go, what is this? I still think my TikTok idea is the way to go, but I'm not going to put it together, because I'm not that guy. But I'm telling you, you know, that's a powerful medium, which is why they're trying to shut it down under the guise of all these other rules. But the reality is, people are getting access to information, and that needs to be stopped, especially if you can turn it into a little dance. But I don't think we're going to do that with the Comp Plan. The new business that I did want to leave us with, which is acknowledging, as you've been doing, this is our last Monday meeting, which is exciting and sad in a lot of different ways, and I've only been with us about five years. So for those of us who are really going to go through a change, thank you for going through that process. I have heard from our residents, and with the exception of them trying to figure out which day is which, they do like that it's all the same day. So I did want to pass it on to the city. But I also wanted to acknowledge, this would be the first year in five years that I don't spend Halloween with my police department, which was a black man's wonderful Halloween irony gift. So I am sad that we won't have that report this year. I suspect they'll be coming up around All Souls Day, though, so their routine is usually right around now. So coming up soon, but I did want to acknowledge that, oh, I'm going to miss that, because that was awesome. That said, my family's carport haunted house is reaching its 10th year, so everybody be safe out there on Candy Day. I'm hearing that trunk or treat should be well-attended again, and we're just right up the street from that. Kudos to the resident who's already reached out to start putting together an electronic, "Here are the best houses to visit." They already reached out to those of us who filled it out last year, and they'll be promoting that this year. So please, turn your lights on, give a kid some candy, give him just a high five, do what you got to do. But sorry, I'll miss you this year, police department. See you in November.
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank the city manager for helping out. Speaking of code enforcement things, one of them was the freeway wall that goes on the north I-5 side to calling the appropriate people to make sure that door was shut and locked to that, trees and bushes there. Appreciate you doing that. And also, as far as the code enforcement goes, our campaign sign rules for our city, I appreciate you helping out with the illegal signs that have been blended in with the campaign signs in our city. So thank you for that.
Okay, I don't see any other hands going up. So next on our agenda is adjournment. We are adjourned.